It is 4:30 Tuesday, March 2nd. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take role, please. Madam Clerk, if you could take role.
Yes, starting with Commissioner Fox, please.
It's not muted.
We can hear you, Cindy.
You can hear me?
Yes. Okay. Commissioner Fox responded, being present?
She's here. Nick's going to help her a second with her.
Okay. Big Eck?
Here, in Monterey Township.
Okay. Coonan?
Monterey Township, yeah.
Here, Banks.
Herrick?
Here in Bay City.
Radke?
Here in Bay City.
Johnson?
Here in Essexville.
And Krieger?
Here in the chamber.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll stand through the invocation on the Pledge of Allegiance.
Eternal Father, you have placed in us a world of space and time. Through the events in our lives, you bless us with your love, Lord. Today, we ask that you will grant to this Board of Commissioners and all those in authority the patience and understanding to work together for the good of all people. In your holy name we ask this, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have citizens' input. Is there anyone out there zooming in that would like to share any comments with the Commissioners? Anybody from the public out there? None being said, we'll move into items of consideration under A. We have a notification of withdrawals from the appointments for the Bay County Road Commission. The motion to receive would be for Tom Rider, Tim Quinn, and Joe Rivet.
Go ahead, Coonan.
Support, Johnson.
Any discussion? With none, roll call, please.
Start a roll call with Commissioner Johnson, please.
Yes.
Fox?
I think she might still be having an issue.
Okay, we can come back. Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan?
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
And is Fox available for vote?
She's jumping in right now. She's jumping in right now. Okay. Just taking a second.
Yay! Okay, Commissioner Fox, on the motion to receive the withdrawals of appointments?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion carries, seven yays, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So what we'll do at this time is we'll start our interview process with the eight candidates. And we will be starting with Paul Wasick. He was going to be coming in. The others will be coming here personally. And what we will do as far as the format, there are actually seven questions. And each one of the Commissioners will be asking a question of the candidate. They will have up to 15 minutes in being able to respond. As soon as the candidate answers question number one, which will be asked by Commissioner Coonan, then we will go into question number two, which will be done by Johnson, and we'll follow that order. So once the question's answered, then we'll move to the next question. So, Paul, are you out there?
Yes, sir, I am. Apollo Beach, Florida.
Very, very nice, very nice. Welcome. So, Mr. Coonan, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Paul.
Good afternoon, Mr. Coonan.
Thank you. What is your understanding of the role and responsibility of a road commissioner?
The Road Commission is one of the divisions where monies are spent to establish, maintain, and improve all roads within Bay County, including cities, townships, and units of government that do not have direct control over the road systems. It is a group of three members currently. They meet twice a week. They are responsible for the budget for the entire county of Bay, like I mentioned. And their position is to do the best possible with the monies they have, plus being able to fund and search and find additional monies from either other funding sources at the state level, or even grants and allocations from other sources.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Paul. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to ask you, so what do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
The utmost priority is obviously pay attention to what the people are asking. That is a multi-folded question in that everyone is going to want their road and/or water source, sewer, or whatever it be, taken care of immediately. In some cases, that can happen. In other cases, as we are all aware, funding is the utmost problem that we have concerns with. Our current governor made it her priority to make her job to fix the roads, as she put it. We are appearing to head towards some sort of funding that might make that happen. I'm not sure that we are there, but she's only been in office for a year, and hopefully that will continue in that direction. Like I say, funding sources are always a major concern, and that's practically any level of governmental services that people are expecting.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome, sir.
Commissioner Radke?
Hi, Paul. Thanks for taking the opportunity to meet with us.
You're welcome, Casey. Nice meeting you, by the way.
Nice to meet you. My question is, what do you think the key to success is when communicating with the public?
The key to success is listen and be honest with people. To simply say, yes, I understand, and I'm going to go in and fix all your problems, and you're going to be real happy when it's all over with. That's the worst mistake anybody can possibly make. You have to listen to what people have to say. Sometimes, they may not come out directly with what their situation or problem is, but by listening to that entire conversation, whatever it might be, you will learn what the real issue is. A second thing you have to be aware of is that in a lot of cases, your skin has to become quite thick rather rapidly. That's not something that you can take personally. And for me, when I first got into this, oh, gosh, 21 years ago, that was a little tough. I'll be frank with you. That was a little tough. But I have learned that it's not me, Paul Wasick, that they're chewing out at the moment that is their situation in general they're upset about and looking for answers. And my position has always been, if I know, I will tell you. If I don't, I will find you an answer, and I will get back with that answer to you.
Very good.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up, Commissioner Big Eck. Are you there?
Vaughn. I think he's muted.
I can't hear him, I'm sorry.
Here I am, sorry. I was muted. I'm Florida, Paul. I was there last week, it was nice and warm.
Yes, and it's still that way, Vaughn.
Got to see the Tigers play a little bit, too.
Oh, good.
So the question, I guess, I have, if we're going in order, tell us about your background, training, and/or experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position.
As I indicated on my resume and various correspondence and conversations that I've had with all of you members of the Commission, I've been in this situation since 2000, when I was first elected as a trustee in Williams Township. From that day forward, I made it one of my pulse-to-the-heart jobs to pay attention to roads, infrastructure, whether it be roads, or whether it be water and sewer, other situations that are needed in our community. Fortunately, people prior to when I came into office had the vision to look ahead and see where the need was. They brought that need in, in the form of water and sewer. They have done improvements on the roads. I can remember a time when we had maybe three roads, three miles of roads in the entire township that were paved. Today, I can honestly say we have less than that that are not paved. All of the others have hard surfaces on them of some sort. We've made improvements, and we do continue to improve, even though we are sometimes forgotten the fact that we're out in the southwestern part of the county. We do know how to raise our flag, so to speak, and pat ourselves on the shoulder. That kind of experience in talking with the people that I dealt with on a daily basis, along with board members, peoples of our community, the Road Commission, and Water and Sewer Departments specifically, were our biggest challenges when I began in office. And I've made it a personal thing to become and remain very much involved with what goes on there. And I believe anyone that has watched me over this time can attest to that, that I'm not afraid to talk or ask a question. I'm not one to remain quiet for very long.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Hi, Paul. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
When thinking about the County Road Commission or your role on the Road Commission, what will success look like to you? And more specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful commission meeting?
Are you asking specifically about the Road Commission part of this job? I couldn't quite pick you up. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. Wow, there's a delay. Okay. When thinking about your role on the County Road Commission, so it could be roads, it could be water, sewer, encompassing, what does success look like to you? And more specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful commission meeting?
Success to me on both parts of the County Road Commission, whether it be water and sewer or roads themselves, would be to have paved roads throughout Bay County. Now, I know that's a dream in the sky, and it would be fantastic to see, but at the same time, some point between now and the not-too-distant future, I can see that a reality. Now, by paved roads, I don't always mean blacktop or concrete. There are other forms. There's chip and seal. There's what is called a ultra-thin overlay. There are various road conditions that can get to the hard surface that you don't need a blacktop surface on. Getting there is going to be a process. Again, everybody wants their road fixed immediately. Anyone who has had millages in their particular communities is well aware of, well, you got my money now, when are you going to fix my road, wherever it might be? That is something that priorities within that particular unit, that local unit, would have to be set, and everyone has to agree to them. And people will just need to understand that yours always can't be the first. But if your road's in bad enough shape, or if your water and sewer needs are in bad enough shape, things can be done to help make that happen. We've had that example in Williams Township several times, where sewer was not in an area, and we had requests from the community. We did that on Garfield Road just two years ago. We moved, provided sewer between US 10 and Salzberg Road on just a few homes along there, but we were getting one of the businesses' interest because they needed it. And this is the kind of thing any community would do, whether it's in the local level or at the county level. See what can be done to get that particular service to that particular customer. And again, customer services is what it's all about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Paul. So what is your understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the Bay County Road Commission?
Roles and responsibilities are to be accountable to the people of Bay County for tax monies that is raised, whether it comes directly from the state, or the county, or the local unit of government, in maintaining and operating and continuing to expand and improve any of the services that is under their jurisdiction. In this particular case, it's roads, it's water, and it's sewer, and it's various things that are all tied and connected to those three fundamentals. You have to have accountability. You have to have responsibility. And you have to show results to all of that. Without that, if I didn't do that, I would be out of that position in no time at all. The people would make sure of that.
Very good. And last but not least, Mr. Herrick.
Oh, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, I'm glad you could be on this Zoom thing like the rest of us.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, by the way.
I got the toughest question of all. Are you a veteran of any military branch of the United States?
Yes, sir. Very proudly so. Army military. I served in Vietnam in 1970, let's see, from January through December. I was just under two years total in the military, 1969 to 1970. And I salute all and every veteran that we have, and Mr. Big Eck especially. Thank you for your service, and anyone on this Commission. Folks, you have no idea what that particular acknowledgement means to me and to any veteran, just saying thanks. You have no idea unless you have been there. It means a lot.
Well, thank you for your service, and thank you for your answers.
You're welcome, Mr. Herrick, and thank you.
Okay. So, Paul, at this point, that will conclude our interview with you. And what I would say to you is, right now, we're kind of on target. Probably 6:30, maybe quarter to 7:00, we should be finished with these different interviews. And then at that point, we will vote to see who will become our next road commissioner. So thank you for your time. You enjoy the sun. And the next individual that's coming up would be Ray Vendree.
Hey, good afternoon. How you doing?
Good afternoon, sir. So we're looking at holding everybody to a 15-minute timeframe. There'll be seven questions that'll be asked. After you answer the first question, then the next Commissioner will come in with the next question. And so at this point, I would say that we're safe enough and distance that if you'd like to take your, if you're comfortable not taking off your mask.
Sounds good to me.
I don't know if that'll get me in trouble or not, but at least the audience will have a chance to put a face with.
All right, thanks. Appreciate being able to take this thing off.
Yes. So with that being said, whoop, I'm seeing Amber.
No, not supposed to do that.
Then I guess, Ray, you're going to have to put that mask back.
Sorry.
Maybe had a shot.
Yes.
Well, I'll do that. No problem.
I need to make sure we keep our lady in the position smiling. And so with that being said, Commissioner Coonan, would you like to start?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello there, Ray. How are you? And the question I have is, what is your understanding of the role and responsibility of a road commissioner?
Well, obviously, especially with just three members on that board, they've got a lot of responsibility, you know, because of the fact that our county roads are so important, and not only to the people who live on those roads, but to everybody else that travels on them. And, you know, being somebody that lives on a county road, you know how important it is. They only have so much of a budget to work with. And so those three Commissioners on that board have to make sure that they're prioritizing the right projects at the right time and making sure that they're making every use of the dollar that they have to work with. And we all know how hard it is to get funding, whether it's from the county or from the state or from the feds. So I think one of the main things they have to do is make sure that they're using the budget they have, but they're doing the right priority at the right time.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Hey, thank you, Ray, for joining us today.
Thanks for being here.
Let's see. My question is, what do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
Well, I think the priority is making sure, you know, we're going to have a fairly new board because whoever gets the opportunity now, and then obviously with Commissioner Jordan on there now, not having a lot of experience. Bill Schumacher's only got a couple of years on there. So one of the main priorities is to make sure that everybody can work together, take the advice of your engineers, you know, you've got Tom on there, Curry's a part of it. And I had the opportunity to work with him before at Michigan Sugar Company on a number of projects. But I think really one of the main priorities we need to make sure that we're doing now is working together while listening to the people that have been there for a number of years and using their advice, and then trying to make the best decisions we can.
Thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
Very good. Commissioner Radke, you're up.
Hi, Ray. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you.
My question is, what do you think the key to success is when communicating with the public?
I'm going to apologize. I didn't really hear you all that clearly, so it's, you can.
No.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No problem. What do you think the key to success is when communicating to the public?
Well, I think, first of all, you have to be honest. And when communicating with the public, if you come across in the wrong way, they're not going to believe what you said, or even if you intended to do it right, you have to be very honest about your answers and being very thorough. And so you want to communicate with the public in a way that they're going to feel like things are being done responsibly and honestly, and you're being upfront with them. So, you know, especially again, as well, you talk about budgets and everybody wanting to make sure that whatever they pay in taxes, they feel like they're getting the best benefit out of it. So it's very important to be a good communicator with the public in a very upfront and honest way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yeah, question number four. Hello, Ray. How you doing? I got the question of, tell us about your background, training, and experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position?
Well, I have been involved, you know, most of my life in some kind of organization, being president of a growers' organization for the modern sugarbee growers for about 10 years. And then actually had the opportunity to be president of their National Association of Sugarbee Growers in Washington, DC for a couple of years. It's a, every two years it rotates. And then came back as the executive director, and then eventually that led to me working full-time for Michigan Sugar Company as a Director of Community and Government Relations. So I've had the opportunity to work with legislators for many, many years on both sides of the aisle, both in Washington, DC and in Lansing. And I really enjoyed that. That's just something I, for whatever reason, I enjoy it. And I think it's very important to be able to work across both sides of the aisle and not worry about what party that is, but rather the people that you're working with and what your goal is to try and work with those people. But I really enjoyed that, having had an opportunity to serve on many numerous boards in the area, whether it's the Great Lakes Bay Regional Alliance. I was on a number of councils there, the United Way. We're currently still on one of the Chamber Boards, and I'm on the Visitor Commission and Visitors' Bureau Board currently. Just a number of things that I've had an opportunity to really enjoy, and obviously you involved with Church on the Commission there also. I think that one of the most important things in a position like this is, especially on a road commission where funding is so important, when you've had an opportunity to work with legislators, I think it gives you an advantage when you're going to go back to the state or the feds, or whoever it is, and be able to communicate well when you're asking for additional funding for projects. And then you know how important funding is. So had an opportunity to, as Director of Communications at Michigan Sugar Company, and be their spokesman for a number of years. And also, just because I've had an opportunity to work with all these legislators all these years, I feel very comfortable doing that. I don't feel in any way concerned about going in and visiting legislators or their staffers. Actually had an opportunity to serve on a committee where I went down to Mexico, 14 different trips down to Mexico City, and then the Mexicans would come back and work with us also on some negotiations with NAFTA in connection with the sugar industry. So a number of different opportunities that I've had over the years that I really enjoyed it, and I think I could bring some of that back to the committee.
Very good. Very good.
Question five, Mr. Vendreech. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
When thinking about your role on the County Road Commission, what will success look like to you? And more specifically, what do you see as the successful components of a success? I'm sorry. More specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful commission meeting? Do you need me to repeat that?
No, I can understand what you're trying to say. That's fine.
Okay.
No, actually, a successful committee meeting is where, obviously, you have an opportunity for good exchange between the Commissioners on the board and also for the public input when people come in and have questions. And to have a good working relationship with all your counties in the area. And I've had an opportunity to actually attend some of the meetings there at the Road Commission. And I find that is the case, that you don't have your supervisors come in and visit with the board. And, you know, there's projects that every township needs. And so it's important to be able, have an open mind of what they're looking for, and still have a, you know, a working relationship where you have to prioritize certain projects and being able to, and you have to say no sometimes. Obviously, we want to be able to work with all townships, and not only that on the roads, but also obviously on the Water Department, too, because I'm very well aware that a good part of the job is also for the Bay County Waters Department. And one of the things that I happened to think about here a while back is making sure that we're going to do a road project that if there's anything that needs to be done with the water lines at the same time, you're not having to come back and find yourself two years later having to tear the road up again because there was something that wasn't done in connection with the Water Department. And that actually happened a few years back, quite a few years back, on Euclid Avenue from Salzberg down north almost to South Union Street, where there was a project that took place and they redid Euclid Avenue, and then had to come back and redo water lines and tear the road up again. So, and I know the question was about a successful meeting, but I guess what I'm trying to say here is that a successful meeting is when everybody's looking at the whole picture, opening up your mind to what the public input is and what the townships need, and try to work with that within your budget. Prioritize it.
Very good. So, Ray, what is your understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the Bay County Road Commissioner?
Well, I understand it's not only the roads that are, roads and visits. Well, I understand it's not only the roads that they're, roads and that they are involved with making decisions on, but also the water department. And obviously, you need to be able to work with individuals in a way that you have an open mind and look at everything that goes on within, how the road commission works, how the water department works. And again, you know, I know I've said it a number of times, but I just can't say it enough that you have to prioritize projects because everybody has a project that they want done. And with only certain amount of budgets to work with, it's very important you look at everybody's opinion and view and try and make those decisions. I know I've mentioned this to a couple of people before, but I think one of the most important things we have to do is think about how we have all this infrastructure right now. You know, our grandparents and our parents worked very hard to put the infrastructure that's in place. And they worked a lot harder than we do in a lot of cases nowadays, just because of the way things were back then. And so we have a real obligation to make sure that we're maintaining these roads and our water and sewer departments so that they don't deteriorate to a point where we can't afford to fix them. And we've seen that happen in certain municipalities. And once you get to that point, then you have a very hard time coming back to the point where you can get things done that you need to. And so I guess my point is, we've seen cases where roads have been finally, after many, many years, they were gravel and they were, you know, chipping seal, and they're deteriorating so bad that there's a lot of talk about just having to take them back to gravel again because the budgets aren't there to do it. And we want to make sure, whether it's a water line or a county road or whatever it is, that we're maintaining these roads so they don't get to that point where we just can't afford to fix them anymore. And as somebody that is involved in farming the county roads are, and as somebody that's worked for Michigan Sugar Company, believe it or not, at Michigan Sugar Company, we've had as many as 56,000 loads a year just come into the Bay City factory alone. And so all that traffic that comes through there obviously brings in a lot of revenue and a lot of business for the area, but it's also very important that the roads are good enough to be able to do that. So.
Very good. Mr. Herrick.
Thank you. Hey, Ray, good to see you. Last question, easy one. Are you a veteran of any branch of the military?
Yes, yep, of the army. I'm a veteran, correct.
Very good.
I'm sorry?
You say you were, you are a veteran?
I am a veteran, correct. Yes.
Very good. Very good. Short and sweet. So at this time, that will end our interview with you. After we are done, which is probably going to be close to maybe quarter to seven, at that point, we will vote to see who will become the next Bay County Road. So I appreciate your time. And if you'll escort out the rear, we'll bring in the next candidate, which will be Jacob Hilliker.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity.
You're very welcome.
Good to see all you. Take care.
You take care. Be safe.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Sorry about that. I apologize.
So Kim, you had a question?
Yeah, Ernie, I think we may be asking the same question.
Some of the answers are flowing into it. So it's giving everybody an opportunity to sell themselves, which I think is some of the purpose of why the questions are as such. Okay. Yep. So, Mr. Hilliker.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me on the screens?
I believe so. It'll be fine.
Nice setup in here. I didn't realize you had this going.
Yep. Everybody's virtual.
Wonderful.
We're going to hold to a 15-minute home limit.
Yep.
There will be seven questions that'll be asked by each commissioner. And what we will do then, Jacob, is we're going to start with Commissioner Coonan.
All right. Mr. Coonan.
Hello, Mr. Hilliker. How are you?
Doing good, sir. How are you?
I guess the question I have, Jake, is what's your understanding of the role and responsibility of a road commissioner?
Okay. So the role and responsibility of a road commissioner is more of an overseen board. You don't actually run the road commission or anything like that. You're support for staff. I think the biggest, biggest part of the job, of course, is to hire the engineer or the administrator, make sure that they're good, and then you oversee them from day to day, provide them with any support they need, overlook the budget when it is proposed to you, make sure that there's no malfeasance, set up bidding, set up a bidding standard, which is already, of course, in place here, tweak anything that needs to be done. Of course, in our county, we oversee the roads and our water system. So it's a little bit different for us. I'm going to take up. Keep following. I'm sorry about that. But as I said, primarily just a supporting role. Hopefully, in theory, you don't get too involved in the day-to-day. You're there to oversee things. You're not staff. You're overseeing staff.
Very good. Very good. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jacob. Good to see you today.
You're muted.
Oh, doesn't say that I'm muted.
You're still muted there, Mr. Johnson.
Huh.
We have no volume.
Me now.
I can hear him, Ernie.
Me too.
Yeah, I can hear him as well.
Oh, weird. Can't hear him here.
Oh.
There we go.
Commissioner Johnson, what can I do?
All right. Well, I did say it's good to see you today and thank you for coming. So let me ask you.
Oh, thank you.
What do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
Okay. The top priority of the, if I were to get on, first of all, it would just be, fill out the last two years of someone else's term. So definitely not to disrupt, to listen, which is the top concern of any road commissioner. Listen to the constituents, the townships, feed that in, oversee, hopefully, some more road funding that's coming through. Not sure how much of that is actually going to make it to us with all the plans that are thrown out there. And make sure that we have top-quality water, of course. I know the plant is new, but we've got to keep on top of that. Primarily, my biggest concern would to be increasing transparency and just reaching out to the constituents of Bay County by holding more public forums, coffee hours, that sort of thing.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Radke.
Hi, Jacob.
Hi, Commissioner.
Thank you so much for joining us today. My question actually leads into what you ended the last question with. And it has to do with the key to success. What do you think, Jacob, is the key to success when communicating to the public?
Oh, I'm going to try not to make this a short answer since I have so much time. You have to listen more than you speak. I think that's the number-one job of a public servant and only speak when you have something useful to say. Yeah, and just being present in the community is a top priority for anybody. Do you have anything to follow up on that one?
Nope.
Okay.
Very good. So Commissioner...
Thank you.
Vaughn, are you there?
Yes, I am here. My wife's bringing me supper now, but I'll not be eating yet.
Just remember, you're not supposed to talk with your mouth full.
Not yet. I'm getting ready, though. I have another meeting tonight. So my question is, tell us about your background, training, and experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position?
Okay. Thank you very much for that question. Well, I don't know exactly where to start there. So first, I showed a large interest in actually running for road commission. In 2018, I ran a race for an open seat, which Mr. Schumacher sits on. So my interest is more than just hoping for an appointment here. Roads are the bedrock of every community here, and certainly water is as well. So I have an undergrad degree in political science and government, and then I have a graduate degree in public administration. And some of that, of course, deals directly with government bodies like this. So I have an education background, but I also have real-world experience. I worked for Congressman Kildee for about five years, covering Bay and Saginaw primarily, or Bay, Saginaw, and Arona and Isco primarily. So I have deep ties to the whole region, even though I just live in Bay City. And during that time, I actually had the opportunity to... Everybody has a role in an office like that, and I jumped on the role of, I was like backup man for infrastructure because I was training and new. And so I jumped at every conference I could about 21st century water systems and roads, bridges, and infrastructure, which actually led me to my next job, which is in construction industry adjacent, which is for the Labor's International Union of North America. And in that, I meet with a lot of contractors from across the state, primarily more on the west side, a little bit in the UP and in Metro Detroit heavy, which is where we do all kinds of construction, as everybody knows in this. So though I don't make direct deals with them, I deal with the fringe benefit funds, so I'm constantly liaising with them. And I've been to, I don't know how many, educational road-building events through my organization as well. We do conferences around the nation. So that's a pretty good background there.
Very good. Very good. Commissioner Fox.
Hi, Jacob. How are you?
Doing great.
When thinking about your role on the County Road Commission, what will it look like to you? And more specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful road commission meeting?
Okay. So if I'm lucky enough to be appointed, I will be the junior member by a few years on the board, but we're all pretty new, which is a benefit and a negative, I think. We're all open to new ideas. Luckily, Mr. Schumacher's been there for a couple of years, and he had the ability to learn off of some very seasoned road commissioners, so he has a pretty good working knowledge of what's going on. And of course, we have Jim Lillo, our wonderful engineer, to lead us through. So I know I mentioned this before, and I hate to sound redundant, but listening, listening to the engineer, reading through everything meticulously, looking through the budgets, looking through our projects, visiting all of our sites as much as possible as well, which I think is kind of a, should be a number-one thing for a public servant who has a role like that. So I plan on going to the water plant, going to road projects as they happen, like staying out of the way, and just working with the engineer and the other commissioners.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. So I'm up. What led you to be interested in serving as a road commissioner?
Oh, okay. Covered it just a little bit. So in my family, my wife and I are very vested in public service, whether it be through nonprofit, doing a food distribution, which we just did the other day in our neighborhood, or running for office. And roads and water were just, I don't know why, but very interesting to me. That's why I got a little more experience in them when I worked for the congressman and through my current job. It's just the backbone of what runs society and civilization. And it seemed like a good spot to run for. I was a little overwhelmed running for the first time for such a niche position. Not everybody knows what you're coming to the door for when you're out there trying to get votes, running for a road commission. I had to answer a lot of questions, which was a lot of fun. It was interesting.
Very good. Commissioner Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jacob, glad you could make it here. I got, you got, this is the easiest answer of all. Are you a veteran of any branch of the military?
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Are you, are you, are you a veteran of any branch of the military?
No, I actually have a couple of underlying health issues that prevented me from serving. I did look into it right as a graduate in high school.
All right. That's easy. See, I told you. Thank you.
All right. So Jacob, that ends the question from the commissioners.
Okay.
And again, I appreciate you taking the time to come in before us. What will happen is we will continue with the interviews. I figure somewhere between 6:30 and 7:00, quarter to. At that point, the board will vote and we'll decide who will be our next commissioner.
Oh, great. Wow, okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to be part of Road Commission speed dating. It was good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, good afternoon. So our next candidate will be Mark Charbonneau. What will happen is we have seven questions. One of each will be asked by a commissioner. And we are going to start this afternoon with Commissioner Coonan.
Hello, Mr. Charbonneau. How are you?
Good. How you doing, sir?
Very good. What's your understanding of the role and responsibility of a road commissioner?
My understanding is to oversee the road commission itself and also the Bay County, the Water and Sewer Department. Take care of the budgets, make sure everything's in line, oversee any equipment needs that are brought to the commission. Just basically, I guess, looking at the union contract, make sure that's all ratified and signed. Sure, there's other issues that I'm not aware of. I mean, politics is, this is... So I just retired in February, so that's why I'm here. I just figured I'd, I seen the posting here. I'd put in for it here to, to serve, to do my duty if I get chosen to be on the board.
Commissioner Johnson.
All right. Thank you, Mark, for coming today.
Thank you, sir.
My question for you, you know, we always have that weird delay. I'm sorry about that. What do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
My biggest stance would be is the budget. I wouldn't want a runaway budget. The other, the other, and to me, it's going to be, there's going to be a fine line as far as the equipment. You obviously want good equipment. You want everything updated, maintained, all within a good budget. I don't, I wouldn't want any budget overruns. And any other issues that came up, just to address them, you know, thoughtfully. You know, as far as the commission itself, you know, to have a good discussion, good debate if issues arise. And that's where I would listen and put in my, I've got a good industrial background. I got almost 30 years over at the power plant with consumers. So I really understand how the water systems work and then the trucks. And I've got a real good background in the maintenance and operations side. So I feel that I would have a good, good opinion on, I mean, on the issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Radke.
Hi, Mark. Congratulations on your recent retirement.
Thank you.
My question to you, what do you think is the key to success when communicating to the public?
Good news would be, would be a good key. Obviously, transparency. My mother, and I don't want to bring this up, but as I was growing up, my mom, she was the treasurer of a bigger township for almost 20 years. And what she taught me through politics was be honest. Good or bad, be honest. And always remember one thing she would tell me. It's the people's money. It's not yours. So you, as far as, treat it with respect. Treat the people with respect and be transparent. And that's, to me, would be the best way to deal with the public or inform them if you have an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bieck. Vaughn, are you eating?
It's Mike's. Oh, there it goes.
Sorry. Didn't want you to hear me eating, so I muted myself. Mark, so one of my constituents back on Nine Mile Road. Had a chance to talk to you before. And my question is, which I just lost here, is, tell us about your background, training, and experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position? training, and experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position.
Like I brought up earlier, I've got extensive background as far as, which would tie into the water and sewer side, I've got a pretty good extensive background as far as maintenance and operation in a plant setting, as far as pumps, check valves, I mean, I could go on and on, as far as the water system is concerned. Sewer side, I would have to get a little more educated on it, as far as how it actually works, you know, the system itself. As far as the road commission side, the graders, the road graders, the trucks and all that, I, I'm pretty well versed in the hydraulic side's equipment. I guess what I'm saying is if I'm, if I'm on the board and its issues are brought to us as far as for parts or how we're gonna handle the budget, I think I'd have a good understanding as far as getting a grasp or maybe explaining to the other commissioners what we, what would be a good fit to, to be the right direction to go. But as far as my experience, like I said, I got 30 years over at the power plant with consumers. In the operations department, I got about 17 years, and I got about 13 years in operations, or I got about 13 in maintenance and 17 in operations. I guess that's about it. I mean, a lot of it would, to me, would, would, would kind of carry over to the, to this position. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Hi, Mr. Charbonneau, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you.
When thinking about your role on the county road commission, what will success look like to you? More specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful road commission meeting?
Of a meeting? Or is that what you, down the question?
So what is, in your role, what, what does success look like for you? So how will you know you've been successful in filling out this term? And then what are the components of a successful meeting? What does that look like to you?
Well, to me, to be successful in the, as a, as a commissioner, would be, we'd be running, like I brought up, I would want the budgets to fall in line. I'm a really conservative person, I don't like to spend any more than I have to, but obviously, as long as it need, for the role, right now, for keeping the roads clear, making sure we have enough salt, making sure that the equipment's all up to date, it's maintained, if needs to be replaced, we get it replaced in a timely manner. But like I said, we gotta look, to me, the budget's gonna be the main driver. I don't want to be going to the people all the time asking for more money. Same, the same thing applies to the water and sewer side. We'd want to keep the water plant and the sewer plant, everything maintained, trucks, pumps, water towers, whatever we need, I mean, and keep it painted, that's to me would be the, you know, I'm big into maintenance, everything is kept up and the budget, but to me, the budget's gonna be the other side of it. I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a balancing act, but you gotta, you gotta, you gotta do it, so that's, that's where I would stand on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mark, what is your understanding of the roles and responsibilities of Bay County Road Commissioner?
No, Ernie, no.
What?
You, you, wrong question.
I'm sorry?
Wrong question, man. Your question number one.
No, no, Kim did cover it number one this time.
Yes, you did.
No. Yes, so I'm, I'm still number six.
Okay.
So I'll repeat the question for you again. What is your understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the Bay County Road Commissioner?
As a commissioner, you, to me, you're gonna oversee, you're, you're gonna oversee the, the operations of, well, I wouldn't say the operations, that's where you're gonna have your directors, your department heads, but you're kind of the last step in the process of overseeing the, the road commission, or the roadside and the sewer side, you're, you know, if they want to make improvements, it all has to run through the engineers, it comes to you for final approval, you know, for final approval. So the buck stops with you. You take that responsibility. If it's a bad, if it's a bad decision, you own up to it. That's, that's the way I'd be. Well, like the one question was pointing, how would I communicate it with the public? Good or bad, I'm gonna own up to it. And yeah, to me, it's to make sure everything is running the way it should run. I mean, I want, and I'll keep going back to it. I'm gonna look at the budget. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be, if, if, let's say, if somebody from the water, water sewer comes, wants 10 trucks, well, myself personally, I'll go over, look at the trucks that are sitting in there, and I'll look at them, say, what the heck do we need 10 trucks for? I mean, that's the kind of way I'd like to run it. I mean, I ain't gonna sit in the audience there and just take your word for it. I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't want to claim to be a liar, but.
Sure.
I have, I have a say in it also, you know, we, obviously, there's two other commissioners, and I'd like to sit down and we'd talk about it, and so, and good, healthy debate, right.
Very good. And Commissioner Herrick, you're up.
Thank you. I'm glad you've been here today. It's a, it's a nice day, and you came inside when it was nice outside, so, but my last question, easy one, are you, are you a veteran of the military?
No, I'm not. I wish I was, sir, I'm not. I did not join.
And that's okay, I just wanted to know if you were.
Okay, cool. I almost did, but I offended mine, I was gonna join the Navy, then he, he got ahold of me just before I was gonna sign the papers, and I, I ended up with a real good job, so unfortunately, but. For a lot of guys who were in the Navy.
Not a problem, not a problem. So Mark, this ends the questions for the interview, so we will probably be finished with the interviews, I would say around 6:30, maybe quarter to 7, and at that point, we'll vote to see who gets appointed as the next road commissioner. So I appreciate you taking the time, like Commissioner Herrick said, on a beautiful afternoon, and thank you.
Thank you. Did you, did you want me to stay here or?
No, I'll have you leave.
I mean, in the building, or do you want me to, it's okay to go home?
You can go home, whichever you'd like to do.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Thomas Lynch III coming in. Come on in. So Tom, what's gonna happen is we have seven questions, and so each commissioner will ask you one question after you're done with your answer, then we'll follow in another commissioner. And so we're gonna start the evening with you, actually, late afternoon, with Commissioner Kim Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lynch, how are you?
Good.
The question I have is, what is your understanding of the role and responsibility of a road?
What was I? I lost. I, do you want me to answer?
The question that he asks is, what is your understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the Bay County Road Commissioner?
To oversee the maintenance and safe transportation on the roadways.
Okay.
And bridges, culverts, easements, overseeing union negotiations, looking in, you know, accepting bids, looking in, you know, for new purchases, and overseeing bidding, and like I said, with the negotiations of unions, just overseeing contracts and, and not, but not looking, you know, not overseeing their stepping on the toes of management, of the management team.
Okay, okay. Very good. Next up will be Commissioner Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lynch, how are you today?
Good.
Good, thank you for coming in. So my question is, what do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
Well, I'd say, just, you know, like I stated a minute ago, about keeping the roadway safe and looking at bridges and culvert, and also I'd say, one thing that probably have to look at in the future, with the electric cars that were, they're saying by 2035, most of them are going to that, that with all these electric cars, you're not going to have fuel tax, and diesel and gasoline, so it might be something that you gotta look at in the future for taxes, you know, for roads, sort of a lot of the monies come from, from, you know, the purchase of gasoline, and you're gonna have electric cars that aren't gonna be using gasoline, so there's gonna be something that you gotta look at in the future, where funding gonna, you know, come from to maintain roads, bridges, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Commissioner Radke.
Hi, Thomas.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us today. My question to you, what do you think the key to success is when communicating to the public?
One thing, you gotta listen, you know, listen to the public and don't try to get controversial, and basically just see what they have and, you know, ask them what they think, what we should be looking at, you know, in the transportation part of the road commission, and keeping, say, is keeping an open mind. Listen, do trainings, get out in the public, talk to people, see what they want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Begic. Vaughn, are you eating dessert?
Yes, I am, I'm having strawberries. Mr. Lynch, hello.
Hello.
My question I have for you, once I find it again, tell us about your background, training, and experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position.
Well, I was in the public service, I was a firefighter for, for 37 years. I started as a firefighter and I come up through the ranks and ended up retiring as fire chief. I had eight years. I overseen, in Buena Vista, I was in Buena Vista where I retired, I overseen the construction of a $2.7 million fire station, also was overseeing of a community center. That project was 1.7 million, and basically, I was at training and plan review, blueprint, reading, just basically overseeing the infrastructure of the township over the years. I was a state certified fire inspector for 16 years, and that was through the State Police Academy. Basically, I'd say I've been in public service for years, and in Buena Vista, it was challenging, it was politically challenging a lot of times.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're all set, Vaughn?
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Fox, you're up next.
Hi, Mr. Lynch, Lynch, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
My question is, when thinking about your role on the county road commission over the next couple of years, what will success look like for you? And more specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful commission meeting?
Well, success is trying to maintain the roads, keep them safe, keep everyone, keep our road commission, they do a fantastic job right now with like snow removal, and I say, one thing, Bay County does have an excellent road commission, and as a commissioner, just being able to oversee that, make sure everything stays status quo, and just basically just be, you know, part of the team to keep things rolling. I mean, doing a good job now, wanna keep going the way it's going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. So I'm up next. What led you to be interested in serving as a Bay County Road Commissioner?
Well, I've been in politics for a while, I've been mayor township trustee, and we retired, got times on my hands, and I think I could be a benefit to the county, to oversee road constructions, maintenance. I know in mayor township, I know there are always some areas that need to be looked at, and then even driving up in the northern areas, there's a lot of roadways that definitely need some attention, and maybe we can look at different avenues, maybe how to generate, or, you know, maybe possibly grants and look at different ways, maybe we can get some funding to help.
Okay, okay. Mr. Herrick, you're up next.
Thank you, thanks for coming in today, Mr. Lynch. Last question, easy one, are you a veteran of the military?
No.
See how easy that was? That's the easiest, I told you it's the easiest question of the day. Thank you.
Very good. So at this point, Mr. Lynch, we will have you exit out the back, and what'll happen is after we're done with our interviews and we continue on with our full board meeting, we will at that point vote to see who will become our next road commissioner.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, good afternoon.
You do a good job.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next we will have a familiar face, and that will be of Mr. Lutz. Good afternoon, Michael.
I'm gonna take my coat off.
Very good. And so while you're doing that, let me just kind of go over some of the ground rules. So there are seven questions, one of each will be asked by a commissioner. We're holding our time to at least 15 minutes. At, at the end of each answer, the next commissioner will ask the following questions. So what we will be doing this afternoon is we're gonna start off with Commissioner Coonan, who's going to ask question number one.
Hello, Mike, how you doing?
Hello, Kim.
Hey, what's your understanding of the role and responsibility of a road commissioner?
The road commissioner is similar to what we had here at Bay County. We have a budget that we carry out, we're administrative, we don't do day-to-day operations, we're just managerial, approve the budget, make sure that things get done, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson.
Hey, good afternoon, Mr. Lutz, glad you could make it today, thank you for coming. My question is, what do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
Well, the, the job entails three entities within the county, you got the water system, the sewer system, and the roads. Of course, you know, the governor wants to make sure we get our roads fixed, and we need a lot of roads fixed in Bay County. I drive them all the time, every day, going to and from work, going to and from whatever. We gotta keep our costs down, our efficiency high, and under budget.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Radke, you're up.
Hi, Michael, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
My question is, what do you think the key to success is when communicating to the public?
Find out what they're really asking about, try to find the solution to the problem that they have, and making sure that everything works within the, the timeframe needed, and the overall scope of what you can do for them, because not everything can be accomplished by a road commissioner or a county commissioner or anything, but direct them, if you can, to someone else that can help them.
Thank you, Michael.
Commissioner Begic, you are up.
Mr. Michael Lutz, good to see you.
Hello, Vaughn.
A question I have is, tell us about your background, training, and or experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position.
Well, I have several things that allowed me to become a good fit for this job. I'm an engineer, I've installed water mains in the ground, I've installed- I've installed sewers in the ground. I've installed roadways. I've been a city of Essexville commissioner when we redid our water and roads in Essexville, along with our wastewater treatment plant. In addition to that, you know, I've gained experience as a city commissioner, as a county commissioner. I know how to read a budget, as many will attest. And I know that we can be conservative, but yet accomplish everything we need to do.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Fox.
Hi, Mr. Lutz. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
When thinking about your role on the county road commission, two years down the road, what will success look like to you? And more specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful commission meeting?
Well, we have things that are, you know, every year, there's a program, put it into place, and we look forward, especially in roads, to these projects that are going to be done this year, the projects that will be done next year, the projects that will be done the year after. And I believe it's four to six years out that we look at different projects, both what the locals need, what the countywide needs are, and what the state is going to do to help with those in sparse funding. I think it's important that we accomplish all those things every year, and more if we can. But at least what we set out to do. And as far as the meeting goes, we have to solve all the issues that come before us in a given month, plan for those that we can, to resolve them as quickly as possible, and just have a plan on moving forward and overcoming everything that's holding us back from getting the required result we need.
Thank you.
Very good. So Mike, I'm up next. Mike, what led you to be interested in becoming a Bay County Road Commissioner?
Well, Ernie, my role, I feel, is one of service to the community. I started in my thirties as a county, as a city commissioner in Essexville, served thirteen years there, served ten years here on the county board. I'm not done serving yet. I believe my role is to serve the public and to help the public attain all that they can with my help.
Very good. Very good. And Mr. Herrick, you are now up.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutz, good to see you again. As I told the previous five or six people, I don't remember how many there are, have been already, but the last question, are you a veteran of the military?
No, I am not a veteran of the military. I was in Vietnam during the Vietnam era, and I wasn't called to go, and I did not enlist.
Okay. That's easy. Thanks. Good job.
Very good. So Mike, at this point, that'll end the questions. And what'll happen is, after we're done with the next two candidates, we will actually vote and decide who the next road commissioner will be. So I appreciate all of the service that you've given, and I hope you enjoy the rest of the afternoon.
Well, thank you.
All right. Yep, good day.
Yep.
Next, we will have Mr. Banashek. I have Amber coming in.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Banashek is set for six o'clock. You're running a little ahead of schedule, so he's not here yet. If the board wants to adjourn for a few minutes to take a break, I can let you know as soon as he arrives.
I think that would be a wonderful suggestion, if I can have someone that maybe make a motion that we take a ten-minute break. Vaughn can finish his dessert and grab a beverage.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Starting with Commissioner Fox.
Yes.
Begic?
Yes.
Coonan?
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Krieger?
Yes. So at this point, we will come back at five to six. That'll give us ten minutes. So we'll see you then. Thank you. So we are now at 5:55. I would like to bring the board of commissioners back in from a recess. And if we could have Mr. Banashek come before the board for questions. I see some movement out in the hallway. And here we go.
Are we ready?
Yes.
What's that?
Mr. Banashek, good afternoon.
Are you on over here?
Yep, please. So Dennis, what's going to happen is, we have seven questions, of which each commissioner will ask you one question. At the end of your answer of the first question, we'll go to the second and then to the third. So we're going to start off this afternoon, because we have a few minutes left before it turns evening, and that'll be Commissioner Kim Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Dennis.
Hi, Kim.
Hey, what led you to be interested in serving the county road commission?
Well, you know, I've been serving all my life, and since civil engineering is what my background is, it made the most sense when the position opened up to apply for it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Commissioner Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Banashek. Thank you for coming today. My question for you is, what do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
The budget, plain and simple. It's always going to be a challenge, no matter how much money is coming out of Lansing. Currently, I like what I'm seeing with the drain department stepping up to help fund some of the stuff that's going to be done by the road commission. I think that's a wonderful move for the taxpayers. But I have no doubt in my mind that our biggest issue is always going to be dollars.
Very good. Commissioner Radke.
Hi, Dennis. Thank you for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
My question to you, what do you think the key to success is when communicating to the public?
Well, as a civil engineer, my biggest priority is being able to explain to the layperson what I'm trying to present as a benefit, so that they understand exactly what it is we're doing. So for me, it's second nature, getting in contact with the public. And one of the things with the open meetings that the road commission has, we always have the ability to get public input. And having been a city commissioner and having to listen to the public in City Hall, I'm well-versed in making sure that people are heard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes, Mr. Banashek, you're looking very spiffy today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My question is, tell us about your background, training, and our experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position.
I've been working in civil engineering for the last thirty-two years. Started out at Spicer and Saginaw, went through a couple of different employers. Currently, I'm working at DNM Site over in Carlton. And my background has been very diverse in terms of the civil engineering projects I've tackled. Roadwork is obviously one of the key responsibilities in my line of work, so I have plenty of experience in terms of roads, as far as doing pavement ratings using the Pazer system, designing cross-sections for pavement depending on the loads, pretty much, you know, everything that the road commission engineer is doing, that's what I do.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Banashek.
My pleasure.
My question for you is, when thinking about your role on the county road commission, two years down the road, what will success look like for you? And more specifically, what do you see as the components of a successful commission meeting?
In terms of success for me, it's going to be no complaints from the public. Hopefully, it'd be accolades. That's what I'd be looking for. But as a member of a commission, I'm basically there as a policy-setting body, so there's very little that I'm going to be able to take credit for. The people that work there are the ones that will get the credit. What was the second part of your question again?
What does a successful commission meeting look like to you?
A successful commission meeting is one without any fisticuffs. But basically, the commission is there to listen, and it doesn't matter which commission you're on, you've got public input, you're there to listen to your constituents and find out what their problems are. And if you can't give them a solution, at least have the time, take the time to talk to them. Especially, one of the things that I like to do is talk to people after the meetings, so I can find out where there was something that I could make an effort on their behalf in order to get their problem solved.
Thank you.
Very good. Next question actually comes from me, and what it basically comes down to is, what is your understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the Bay County Road Commissioner?
As I said, my experience formerly as a city commissioner, it's a policymaking body. I'm not out there making promises to people about how I'm going to fix the roads. I'm making them a promise, I'm going to do the best I can to make sure the roads are safe.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Herrick, you are up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Banashek, good to see you again.
You as well.
Last question, easiest one. Like I told everybody, are you a veteran of the military?
No, I'm not.
See how easy that was? Endless. Thank you.
When I joined the Navy to become an aircraft pilot, a naval aviator, it was during the Carter years, and they just weren't hiring. I was number two out of a thousand in terms of my physical, so I did not get a chance to join.
Okay. Okay. So Dennis, at this point, this'll end the interview process with you. We have one more candidate, Mr. Rosnowski, that's going to be up at that point when we finish with him. Board will come back in and we'll have a vote to see who will become the next road commissioner. So I appreciate you taking the time in here in the afternoon, and now you can enjoy the evening.
Well, thank you very much. It was nice to be here. I'm glad you guys actually went through an interview process, gave me a chance.
Thank you.
Take care now.
Yep. Have a good afternoon.
Good evening.
So here's how this all goes. Obviously, we're saying we save the last class for best, right?
Let's go with it.
Okay. So there are seven questions, of which one commissioner will ask you a question. After you answer that, the next question will be offered to you, the commissioner. So we will start this evening off with Commissioner Coonan. Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Mr. Rosnowski. How are you?
Fine, fine.
What led you to be interested in serving the, on the county road commission?
I saw the advertisement, and I haven't been since I retired from the fire department. For the last nine years, I've served as the pension trustee, citizen rep for the Bay City Police and Fire Pension System. And it has a budget currently overseeing is right around $55 million. And I've always been active in charities here and there, and I just thought I'd like to give my time to something like this. I've also worked the last nine years for the contractor, for contractor, for the state working at Lafayette Bridge, and I've seen the MDOT people come and go on a very regular basis. And I've seen the difficulties and problems that they talk about at all levels, with funding and material and people and personnel for the bridges in the state, and also how it relates towards the roads and the other projects for MDOT, so I knew this was along those lines.
Well, thank you, sir. Very good. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Rosnowski. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your interest in serving. My question for you tonight is, what do you foresee as the utmost priority upon taking this position?
The utmost priority is going to be, I could see maybe a buy-in from the community as far as funding and patience. And by that, I mean realistically, in a state of Michigan with an infrastructure, roadwise, that's designed for about forty to fifty percent more people than we currently have, say that I like to call it the heyday of the fifties and sixties. And now the population's gone, the tax base is gone, the structures are older, a lot of the jobs that were very good paying for high school educations are long gone. So the challenges have been there for a while. I don't see silver bullets. If there were magical grants here and there at the state, federal, local levels, they would have already presented themselves by now. So it's being realistic and letting the people know we're going to do the best we can, and to be honest with them.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Casey, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Hi, Michael. Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
My question to you is, what do you think the key to success is when communicating to the public?
That's all you have to do is look at the last half a decade of politics and the news and different types of media. Honesty is the key. Nothing more than that. Some people won't like what you say, but that's what happens when you're adults. You have to take good with the bad. I really can't sum it up any more than that. It's communication and being honest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Commissioner Begic.
Yes, Michael, thanks for joining us and waiting to be at the end, and maybe the best. We'll see. Tell us about your background, training, and our experience that uniquely makes you the best candidate for this position.
As far as, I worked on a, retired from the Bay City Fire Department as battalion chief, worked with budgets, currently work, as I mentioned, I'm a trustee with the Bay City Police and Fire Pension System, overseeing that budget. I oversaw budgets on the fire department as far as with, it was on a smaller scale, but it was without, with turnout gear, safety equipment, ice rescue equipment, things of this nature. I've worked for, as I said, I work as a bridge tender, just seeing things, talking to engineers that are constantly there and different people from at the state level. I also worked for six and a half years on three different railroads when I was younger, and seen the transportation system from that perspective, although I know they've made some great improvements since I've been there. My willingness to give my time and serve as a board member.
Very good. Commissioner Fox.
Hi, Mr. Rosnowski. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
My question to you is, when thinking about your role in the county road commission, two years down the road at the end of the term, what will success look like to you? And what do you see as the components of a successful road commission meeting?
Success to me is that the commission meets, the road commission itself meets all of its financial obligations and the, it's systematic, systematic, I'm saying it wrong, system obligations as far as safety of the roads, maintenance, if there has to be a building, new ones, bridges, the overseeing of the water, the county water system. And I know the bridges are also another key problem that is cropping up very quickly. Keeping, averting disaster while addressing the needs of all these many different aspects of the road commission with the, what I can only imagine is limited funding, or we wouldn't be having these problems. So it's a matter of prioritizing. And if people were happy with what we did, then I would say that would be a success. That would show success. And if they're going to be angry, maybe it looks room for improvement. I'm not saying that's exactly what it is, but it's always a possibility. But that's what I think success means. You have to make your constituents happy.
Thank you.
So Michael, what is your understanding of the roles and responsibilities of a Bay County Road Commissioner?
Well, you set, alter, or change policy as it becomes necessary, or as is needed. You oversee the budget. I would, you set priorities. You're going to have many different problems prop up or different areas that need attention with limited resources. And you have to make sure that they all get met in some way, shape, or form. You have to prioritize. One thing I would emphasize is not, not micromanaging. You have good people from the supervisory level on down. They're the experts. Our job is to, for lack of a better word, a financial watchdog and also a sounding board for the public. You're a point person for them to come to when they want their concerns heard.
Very good. Commissioner Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, good to see you again. I know, probably hard to see from there, but I'm here. So the last question, the easiest one, is are you a veteran of the U.S. military?
I am not.
I told you it was the.
Paramilitary, like yourself.
This is something we have to do.
Yep, I understand.
Very good. So Mike, at this point, that ends the interview process with you. So what will happen at this point, we'll ask you, of course, to leave. And then we will continue with our board agenda and we will be voting on who will become the next road commission. So I appreciate you taking the time to come out, especially on such a gorgeous afternoon. And I hope you'll get a chance to enjoy the evening.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
So we're going to move on to number C, the appointment of the Bay County Road Commission to serve the unexpired term ending December 31 of 2022. Madam Clerk, are you going to be able to tally the votes?
Yes.
Okay, what, I'm just going to make a suggestion, we could discuss this, but with us having eight candidates, one of my thoughts would be for each one of us commissioners to choose the top three. And then from there, we'll vote to see who comes out of the top three to become the next road commissioner. For any other possible possibilities, if everybody is okay with that. I'm looking for a little minor discussion if we could.
Ernie.
Yes, Kim. Yes.
I think after the first round, you're going to probably only have two. You know, so we should continue to do it the way we've always done it, I believe.
Okay.
You know, you could end on the first one, who knows?
Okay. Anyone else?
I think, maybe, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe you should explain to everybody what the way we've always done it is.
Well, what happens is everyone will have a chance to vote for their pick. And if that's the way, it is the way that has been done in the past. I'm just looking at, because we have eight individuals, what would be the most efficient way for everyone to cast their votes? And I am in favor of what Kim is saying, that we go ahead and ask each commissioner to pick the individual. And then we'll take the scores and see who now becomes the next road commissioner. So if everyone is in agreeance with Kim's suggestion, I think that's what we'll do. And we will come to Madam Clerk. And if you will call on the commissioners for their vote, that would be great.
Can we start the vote at this point in time with Commissioner Begic?
Dennis Benashak.
Commissioner Conan.
Thank you. I just want to be on the record to say all of them were great. Any of them would do a great job. With that being said, with that being said, I'm going to vote for Jacob Hilliker.
Commissioner Herrick.
Ray Vandrich.
Commissioner Radke.
Jacob Hilliker.
Commissioner Johnson.
Again, I'd like to say that, thank all those who showed up today for the interview process and hope will serve. I appreciate it. Did an excellent job today. My vote will be for Mr. Hilliker.
Commissioner Fox.
My vote will be for Mr. Wasik.
And Commissioner Krieger.
I will be voting for Jacob Hilliker.
Total vote count, Vandrich one, Hilliker four, Wasik one, Lynch zero, Lutz zero, Benashak one, Rosnowski zero, Charbonneau zero.
So at this point, with Commissioner, I'm sorry, with Jacob Hilliker coming in with four votes, I would like a motion to approve Mr. Hilliker as the next road commissioner to fill the remaining term that expires on 12/31/22.
Don't move, Conan.
I'll support it.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Conan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
And Krieger.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Motion carried.
Thank you. And again, on behalf of the commission, I certainly appreciate all of the individuals that put their names in. They're all very qualified. And in a couple of years, there will be a chance for them to run again for Road Commission. So next on our list, under appointments to Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee, we have three individuals, Dave Solgar, Tim Atkinson, and Freddie Whitmore. Madam Clerk, if you would call the commissioners to get their vote, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Herrick.
I'm sorry, what is this for?
This is for the Veterans Affairs Committee.
I'm sorry, yes, I know. Back to my papers here.
Not a problem.
I'd be voting for Mr. Eckstein.
Conan.
Dave Slager.
Radke.
Tim Eckstein.
Johnson.
Tim Eckstein.
Fox.
Dave Solgar.
Begic.
Tim Eckstein.
And Krieger.
Tim Eckstein.
Slager two, Eckstein five.
Then you, Madam Clerk. What I'd like to do is have a motion forwarding Tim Eckstein as the next appointment for Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee.
Move Begic. Make that motion.
Supported by Kim. Yes.
I'm sorry, who did the support on that?
Kim Conan.
Okay. Starting with Radke, please.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Conan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
And Krieger.
Yes.
Thank you. Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll move now into unfinished business. Is there anything? I have nothing. After unfinished business, we'll move into new business. There are a couple housekeeping things we need to take care of with Commissioner Fox, if you would, please.
Yep, Resolution 2021-28. The fencing, the grant approval to apply for the grant for the fencing project. I move that resolution.
Or. Discussion. With no discussion, all those in favor, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Radke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Conan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
And Krieger.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays to pass Resolution 28.
And Resolution Number 2021-29 for the Bay County Fair and Youth Expo, the grant to purchase and install the lighting and the lighted digital sign. I move that resolution as well.
Or Begic.
With none. Roll call, please.
Roll call would start with Johnson, please.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Conan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
And Krieger.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Resolution 2021-29 passed.
Very good. Commissioner Fox, thank you very much. We'll move into miscellaneous. At this point, we got County Exec Jim Barsha sitting up there in the corner. If you have the opportunity to maybe comment on what was done with the Road Commission or anything else that you'd like to add tonight. Whoop, you're on mute, Jim. Whoop, you're still.
Still muted.
Yep. You're still muted, Jim.
How come?
Oh. Whoop, somebody's there.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks a lot. I was trying to take it off myself and I had to go lower. But yeah, I just wanted to compliment the entire commission and staff for the extensive interview that they afforded the opportunity to all of the candidates. And I think as Commissioner Conan said, it would have been a tough decision because all of them seem to have a passion for infrastructure. But I do think that, you know, you were very thorough in your interview questions and very fair also, and it was your decision. And I think it was a tough decision, but I think Road Commissioner Hilliker will do a good job. He ran two years ago. And we'll, and then the voters will also have an opportunity to weigh in then as well on who will serve in the next term. But I thought all of the candidates did a pretty effective job at communicating their awareness of how important infrastructure, especially road, water, and sewer are to Bay County's future and to all of the governmental entities that comprise Bay County. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. You did a great, I thought all of you did a great job and had really incisive questions. And I know it would have been tough as a commissioner to make a decision between. So I think all of the candidates were pretty well-versed and obviously passionate about wanting to serve.
Yep. And again, you know, all the commissioners participated. But we wouldn't have been able to pull this off if it wasn't for Deanne putting this all together in such a short period of time. So again, on behalf of the commission, we certainly appreciate her due diligence and working basically into the evening to make sure that all the candidates were informed of what was going to be expected and how it was going to, you know, happen. So I don't have anything else under miscellaneous unless somebody does. Under announcements, I do have one. With some of the changes that continue to happen with the state of Michigan, it looks like now, next week, with our full board meeting, we will be able to have the county commissioners actually in chamber. But that being said, you also have the ability to still zoom into a meeting until the end of the month. And depending on whether or not the legislators extend their rule for us being able to go viral, starting then in April, everybody will be in the chamber. But as far as it goes now, next week, you can come in here or you still have the ability till the end of the month to be able to zoom in. So with that being, and of course, we'll be six feet apart and we'll be using masks just to make Amber happy. So that being said, Ms. Amber, is there any reason that we need to have a closed session?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
Very good. And so as Mike Durancheck would say, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Don't move, Conan. Don't move.
Well, Clerk, would you like to take roll for me, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Fox.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Conan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Motion adjourned by seven ayes, zero nays.
Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.